Well, what time it is?
Oh, it says eleven on there.
Okay, alright. I'm gonna reconvene our special meeting of the Finance Committee from July twenty-sixth. So we can, um, so we can take public testimony later in the meeting. But first, I am going to ask the Secretary to call the role.
Director Harrington?
Present.
Director Robinson is absent. Chair Ryder?
Ryder is here.
And for the record, both Directors also present. Director Sorel?
Present.
Great. We're going to receive another overview of the budget presentation. Will largely be similar to the one that we received earlier, but for sake of the folks attending for the public hearing portion of this meeting, we are once again going to review it. Did I get that right?
I think so.
Okay, alright, perfect. Alright, so I now will hand the floor over to Pam Cassara, our Chief Financial Officer, to begin the overview of the presentation.
Alright, thank you Chair Ryder. Next slide. So today, we're going to run you through a few of our FY twenty-four accomplishments, FY twenty-five initiatives, give a brief historical overview, then we'll talk about the FY twenty-five budget, touch on special purpose funds, and wrap it up with our appendix of abbreviations. Next slide. So we'd first like to start with a look at how we're doing this year. So as a reminder, we try to align everything we do around our strategic pillars. You can see them here across the top. Patient Safety, Clinical Excellence and Quality, Health Equity, Community Health and Integration, Patient Experience, Growth, Innovation, Transformation, Optimization, Systemization, and Performance Improvement, Workforce Talent and Teams, and Fiscal Resilience. And there's many non-financial achievements listed here, but the ones that most impact our financial performance and the budget are the items around expanding services and/or improving operations or reducing waste and expenses. So I won't read all of these to you, but a couple of call-outs. On the left, the top point mentions entering into value-based contracts, which will give us increased reimbursement. On the right, the items in the upper right, opening the new neurocritical ICU, launching the Cook County Health Express Care, expanding telehealth at Cirmac, et cetera, also all help to increase volumes. And then the second bullet around capital equipment also, so helps increase volumes as we'll have no downtime related to broken equipment. And then the bottom bullet, Revenue Cycle Turnaround Plan continues to increase our collections and reduce our denial so that we can reinvest those dollars into services to our patients. Next slide. So looking on to twenty-twenty-five, you'll see more of the same. Generally, we're looking to continue on the path we've started over the last few years through a combination of expanding services or decreasing expenses through standardization, centralization, or consolidating. Couple of call-outs on this one. On the left, you'll see bullets around continuing to grow the service lines and behavioral health initiatives. And then on the right, continuing to expand at Provenant and our Brownsville Health Center opening this fall. And you'll see a lot of words again, like optimization, streamline, looking to, again, increase throughput and/or reduce expenses in FY twenty-five so we can, as to remain financially viable in the years ahead. Alright, so for a brief historical overview, just to put things in context. Next slide, one more. There we go. So this slide will give you some historical perspective, and you can see the trends over time. And this is important because as we build our annual budget, we start with volumes. You can see here that since the FY twenty dip related to the pandemic, all key volumes are showing slow but steady growth. Next slide. And this is our where we've been and where we're going slide. Going back to twenty-nineteen, you can see we had a pretty big negative or deficit of nearly five hundred million dollars. But we've enjoyed surpluses the last few years driven by the pause on redetermination during the pandemic where people were able to retain their insurance coverage, along with Medicaid expansion to our resident immigrants, strategic service line growth, and good fiscal management. Additionally, on this slide, you can see the lines coming together in FY twenty-five to zero, in other words, a balanced budget. And then in the out-year projections, the expenses start to exceed the revenue, however, management would be expected to address any projected deficits through a combination of revenue growth and/or expense reduction. Next slide. This slide shows our budgeted FTE trends over time, which is also important as our salaries, wages, benefits comprise over fifty-one percent of our operating expenses. In most recent years, FY twenty-one through twenty-three, the increases were related to expanding services, related to specific strategic initiatives, addressing the needs related to COVID, and the asylum seekers or new arrivals. And then last year, there's a decrease where we implemented a three-hundred-and-eight FTE reduction of vacant positions only that was related to an exercise around productivity benchmarking and rightsizing the organization. And then for FY twenty-five, you can see we've budgeted flat or the same as FY twenty-four, so no additions or reductions. Next slide. So let's look at the FY twenty-five budget. Alright, on this slide, we have our base budget assumptions. The overarching goal of the budget process is to come in with a balanced budget, which means our expenses cannot exceed our revenues. And since the volumes and membership drive their revenues, we have to start there as we don't know how much expense we can cover until we know what our revenue's gonna be. We start with the current year actual projected volumes and add or subtract for known impacts from there, as shown on this slide. And FY twenty-five is basically a continuation of strategies we've been working on the last two years, especially around growing services at Provenant and continued ramp up of the cardiac, neuro, and cancer service lines at Stroger. Next slide. This slide shows how that thought process translates into numbers, and these are the key volume statistics that drive the budget. So again, we look back at how we've done, we look at the current year and whether or not we're meeting budget, and then we look forward to the next year's budget. These volumes represent very reasonable and achievable growth based on current year run rates and planned continuation of the planned strategic initiatives. Next slide. Which brings us to the proposed FY twenty-five budget of five-point-one-four-six billion. First, looking at revenue, this is an eight-hundred-and-ninety-million or twenty-point-nine percent increase over the FY twenty-four budget, but is a reasonable and achievable one-hundred-and-seventy-eight million or only three-point-six percent increase over this year's projected performance of four-point-nine-six-eight billion. Touching on the bigger variances in the breakdown, you can see the largest piece, six-hundred-and-ninety-one million or seventy-eight percent, is coming from county care, and we'll get into their assumptions in a later slide, but generally, they've been doing so well the last few years, retaining the membership and exceeding the budget, that we went with a more realistic membership target for FY twenty-five. On the hospital clinic side, a hundred-and-forty-three million increase over FY twenty-four budget, but a sixteen million decrease from this year projected due to anticipated increases in charity coming from both the budgeted increases in volume, as well as the shift in payer mix or decrease in Medicaid related to redetermination. Next slide. Moving on to the expenses, the health fund is balanced at five-point-one-four-six billion as well, and we'll go through each office in a moment, but the large increases here in expenses are primarily coming from the health plan services or county care and Stroger. And on the FTE side, you'll see we're flat, again, seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-six physicians, no increases or decreases in total. However, there are shifts between offices that were made to achieve various strategic initiatives. Next slide. Now, we'll run through each office, starting with Stroger. A hundred-and-thirty-million increase in expense and an eight-position increase. Again, this is key expense drivers related to continued ramp up of the new service line investment for cardiology, neurology, and cancer, various medical expense inflation cost increases for lab due to increased volumes, the new robotic assisted surgeries, pharmaceutical utilization, investments in technology, and use of medical consultants. In addition, this budget reflects the half-year impact of the five-percent quota increase in personnel expense. Next slide. Looking at Provenant, a twelve-million increase and a thirty-eight-position FTE increase. Again, new, driven by the new and expanded service lines, a crisis triage stabilization center will be opening, neurology, stroke, GI, and women's services, PTO-T and speech expansion, and a new dedicated observation unit. In addition, facility infrastructure upgrades and investment for the aging campus. Next slide, looking at outpatient, which is our ACHN, our clinics and core, thirty-three million increase, a three-position increase. Key drivers, expansion of virtual and urgent care to select clinics, the new Brownsville or Thirty-first Street Clinic opening this fall, and then continued health needs of the new arrivals. Correctional health? Going up twelve million and going down six positions. Key expense drivers here, telehealth service expansion and phasing continues, maximizing technology to provide efficient, effective, and safe service, and the reduction in FTEs reflects staffing and programmatic realignment under the Office of Behavioral Health to meet clinical needs of increased mental health demand. Next slide. Public health, going up two million in expense and two positions. Key drivers here, communication initiatives for expansion of advertisement of the CCDPH services to the public, and the new broadview wear-help facility for vaccine distribution. Next slide. Health administration, thirty-five million increase in expense, a forty-seven-position decrease. Again, this is continued investment in revenue cycle, HR and supply chain functions to increase revenue, expand hiring and optimization, and drive operational efficiency. And then continued expansion of the life sciences department to support research, and the reduction in positions reflects transfers from the position control committee pool to other offices to achieve strategic initiatives. Moving on to county care. The largest increase are six-hundred-and-sixty-two million and two positions. This is entirely driven by their expected increase in membership. We used three-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand-three-hundred-and-one members per month for the budget. The revenue per member per month is expected to increase due to the utilization cost trends and program changes, medical loss ratio of ninety-three-point-six percent, and the rest of the expense consistent with current year run rates. Next slide. This slide, as you've seen in past years, just depicts the anticipated decline over the course of the year due to the positive retention rate that county care has enjoyed, though this year you'll see much smaller decreases month-to-month of only a few thousand. Next slide. And then this slide shows the projected membership for each population in the plan and the contribution or net gain and loss by each plan, and that bottom rate, a hundred-and-forty-two-dollar contribution margin average equates to approximately fifty-six million positive to the health system, coming from both the domestic spend, which is the county care patients that use CCH, and net income of the plan. Alright, moving on to our special purpose funds. Special purpose, the, special purpose funds and grants are additional monies on top of and not included in the five-point-one-four-six-billion FY twenty-five health fund budget we just reviewed, but are an essential part of how CCH is able to continue to provide needed services beyond the traditional healthcare, hospital, and clinic setting. These grants broadly categorize and address issues such as behavioral health, opioid and substance abuse, food is medicine, COVID-nineteen and emergency preparedness, trauma-informed treatment, and healthy children and families. For FY twenty-five, we'll have almost a hundred million dollars comprised of over eighty-five separate grants and three-hundred-and-fifty additional positions to help us carry out this important work. Next slide. And as you saw on the previous slide, since ARPA is almost half of the hundred million dollars, we just wanted to touch on our ARPA progress today. ARPA is the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty-twenty-one, which included one-point-nine-trillion of federal stimulus funds to hasten the recovery from COVID-nineteen, and of which Cook County received almost a billion dollars, who in turn designated a hundred-and-seventy-nine million to CCH for various initiatives categorized here. And we are about a third of the way through the award period and would hope to be about thirty percent expended. We're currently at twenty-six-point-five percent, but should soon bypass that with the recent Stronger Together subrecipient awards totaling forty-five-point-two million, targeted at resolving behavioral health inequities across Cook County through expansion of access for early intervention, prevention, treatment, support, recovery, and crisis assessment. And that concludes our FY twenty-five budget presentation. I'd like to thank my finance team, especially Budget Director Joe Francois and Associate CFO Scott Spencer, and I'll turn it back over to Chair Ryder.
Thank you Pam. I'd now like to begin receiving public testimony. Each speaker has three minutes. The Secretary will remind the speaker when there is one minute left, and again, when their time has expired. Do we have anyone registered for public testimony? Debbie?
We do. We have four individuals who registered.
Okay, and then if there are any, if there is anyone beyond that, we will take them after our registered speakers. So do you wanna, wanna start rocking and rolling?
Sure. The first, the first speaker is Crystal Tyler, followed by Mona Elginde. Crystal?
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. I did not know I was going to go first.
Good morning.
But I, I'm really pleased to be here. I'm sorry?
You win.
Congratulations. So again, thank you so much for having me here. My name is Crystal Pertle Tyler. I use she/her pronouns. I'm the CEO of the Illinois Public Health Institute. Our mission at the Illinois Public Health Institute is to advance health equity and health justice through policy and system change. And throughout our twenty-three-year history, the Cook County Health and the Cook County Department of Public Health have been strategic partners and funders in that work. CCDPH staff and Cook County staff serve in leadership roles on several coalitions alongside us in our Illinois Alliance to Promote Opportunities for Health. With a focus on nutrition, physical activity, and chronic disease prevention, the county sits on our leadership team. In addition, on our Alliance for Health Equity, which addresses social and structural determinants of health through initiatives that target food access and food security, housing, and mental health, and a community health needs assessment, Cook County Health sits on our leadership team and advises us strategically. And then finally, on our most recent Cook County-wide Community Health, Community Information Exchange, which will facilitate the provision and coordination of social services such as housing, food, and mental health care for people experiencing homelessness, Cook County sits on our leadership team and advises us strategically. The county's contributions have led to the transformation in physical education, training for gym and health teachers across Cook County and the state. The county's early investment in a new PE teacher training program after shifts in state policy was highly effective and inspired the state to further invest in statewide training. Additionally, Cook County has led efforts to implement the Good Food Purchasing Initiative, which is adopted by resolution by the county board to ensure that foods purchased and served with the county funds support nutrition, economic, worker, and animal well-being. And IPHI sits on that Good County, Good Food Task Force as part of our collaboration with Cook County. I have a number of other examples here, but I think the key point is that the county has been instrumental in advancing health equity, and we fully support all of the additional changes to the budget. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you. Our next speaker?
The next speaker is Mona Elginde, followed by Itadal Shalabi.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for inviting me to speak today about our partnership with Cook County Health. My name is Mona Elginde, and I'm with Legal Aid Chicago. I supervise our Health Forward Salud Adelante Medical Legal Partnership that's been in place since twenty-seventeen. Legal Aid Chicago is the largest free legal services provider for low-income individuals in the Midwest. Medical legal partnerships have been proven to improve the health outcomes for the patients they serve. MLPs reduce visits to the hospital for chronically ill patients and lead to more patients taking their medications as prescribed. By integrating the work of both medical and legal professionals, we are introduced to patients suffering from health-harming legal needs when they don't even realize they have a legal problem that a lawyer can help them with. Our MLP specifically, excuse me, focuses on improving food and income insecurity, improving access to health coverage, preserving housing stability, and personal autonomy. Health equity requires equal access to justice. To give you an idea of the justice gap documented in twenty-twenty-two, only twenty-five percent of those who needed legal assistance actually sought it. For that reason, we conduct ongoing trainings with the Cook County Healthcare Coordination Team so our healthcare partners can identify the issues that may not look or sound like legal problems. In twenty-twenty-three alone, we had a hundred-and-seventy patients referred to us, which led to two-hundred-and-ninety-two cases that we accepted. We successfully obtained over four-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars in benefits that our clients were entitled to in that year alone. One good example of the work that we do with the funds we receive from Cook County Health is illustrated by Mr. C.'s story. Mr. C. was referred to us in twenty-twenty-two for help because he could not afford his basic living expenses. He was wheelchair-bound and living in a second-floor apartment. We learned immediately that he was entitled to an additional cash benefit that he was not, he was not aware of. We helped him to apply, but he was denied. We filed an appeal, and he was approved for an additional six-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month. During that time, his roommate moved out of state and stopped paying rent. An eviction case was filed against him, and he had no means to fight it. We assisted him to have the case dismissed, and he was able to move into a first-floor apartment to live independently. But during that move, Medicaid was erroneously terminated.
Pardon me, you have one minute left?
Thank you. We represented him so there would be no gaps to his medical coverage that he so needed, and we got him started with homemaker services to allow him to continue to live independently. We have had five cases with Mr. C. since two thousand and two. This case is a very typical example of how one legal issue will always follow another with some of our most vulnerable populations. We can make a big difference, and with each case that is referred to us and sent our way, and we are so grateful for this partnership to continue. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Itadal Shalabi, followed by Sonia Alaya.
Morning.
Good morning, how are you?
So far, so good.
My name is Itadal Shalabi, and I'm the co-founder and executive director, along with Nairman Taha of Arab American Family Services. Arab American Family Services is a nonprofit multi-service organization founded in two thousand and one, providing caring compassionate service primarily in the southwest Cook County suburban region. Through our work, we continue to expand to get areas of Cook County and beyond. AFS is recognized Illinois welcoming center and a trusted community institution with expertise in the cultural linguistic needs of Arab Americans and the growing number of immigrants in the southwestern suburban region. AFS has also worked to resettle Iraqi, Syrian, and Afghan refugees, and most recent asylum seekers arriving from the southern border. Let me share with you a little bit of our story and why we exist. Extremely frustrated with the lack of services for our community despite witnessing the growing needs among our families, Nairman and I rolled up our sleeves and founded AFS. Over two decades, two decades ago, with a staff of two, we started out with providing services for our seniors, then added domestic violence services, and continued expanding our programs to address evolving and often complex issues faced by our community from a cultural and linguistic framework. Today, with a staff of almost one hundred, AFS provides case management, access to public benefits, domestic violence and sexual assault services, immigration legal services, English as a second language, and citizenship courses, elderly services including congregate meals at two sites, parent mentoring program in six schools, community education including health promotion and prevention. We are excited to launch our new food pantry. We're about to open with culturally appropriate food. We also offer housing assistance, workforce development, mental health, and substance use treatments. In twenty-twenty-three, we served over eighteen-thousand households, helping individuals and families gain stability and self-sufficiency throughout the southwest suburbs and other parts of Cook County. We serve a largely ignored and extigmatized community despite its growing impact in the region. According to the U.S. Census, the Arab-speaking population grew more than forty-five percent between two thousand and twenty-twenty, and the number of Illinoisans who claim an Arab ancestry has more than doubled since the census first measured ethnic origins in the nineteen-eighties. Cook County is home to eighty percent of the Arab population in the state, and in fact, it is the county with the highest Arab population in the nation, specifically with the highest Palestinian population. Let me point out that any number I share with you is an undercount since Arab-Americans are classified as white. It does census racial classification, which means we are also excluded from most of the grants funding available for culturally-specific programming and other minorities.
Pardon me, you have one minute left.
We expect this to change, and with addition Middle Eastern Mina, ethnic category, a policy we changed spearheaded in the, in the state. AFS is fortunate to have partner and supportive Cook County Health and Cook County Department of Public Health to connect our community to a greater range of health and behavioral health issues. In particular, today, we want to highlight the incredible work we have been doing. With the Cook County, with the support of Cook County Health and its Department of Public Health, AFS was pivotal in bringing life-saving COVID-nineteen resources to hard-to-reach immigrant communities in the southwest suburban area, including over one-point-five-million dollars in direct assistance, PPE distribution. Sorry.
I apologize, you've reached three minutes, so if you wouldn't mind wrapping up your comment, please.
Approximately sixty-five percent of Arab-Americans are at risk of developing some type of mental health disorders and mental health challenges, and are among the top five reportedly challenges by Arab-American community. For Arab-Americans who are, Thomas refugees, experience of warnings, Arab-Americans have histories of international, intergenerational trauma and historical trauma that can be triggered. This grant that we have partnered with Cook County has given us the opportunity to do a needs assessment that captured the needs of our community, that has allowed us to hire more behavioral health counselors, that have allowed us to work and make and take the stigmas away from our community. So we ask you at Arab American Family Services to continue funding immigrant communities, behavioral health communities, and we welcome the continued funding and support from Cook County Department of Public Health. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public speaker, please.
The next speaker is Sonia Ayala.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, everyone. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
My name is Sonia Ayala. I'm the Director of Care Management at Esperanza Health Centers. Esperanza Health Centers is a federally qualified health center on the southwest side of Chicago. I've been with Esperanza for about nine years now, so I've been able to witness the growth of the partnership that we've had with county care, Cook County, Medical Home Network, and we've grown so much since my, my start time of twenty-fifteen. I like to share that we have about seventeen-thousand members assigned to the healthcare plan county care, and we serve about fifty-thousand patients a year at our clinics. And we've been able to, because of the, the increase in our membership, we've also been able to grow a lot of our, our patient-facing teams, such as patient navigators who help our patients with redetermination, help them apply for Medicaid, Medicare coverage, and just ensure that they work through any barriers our patients encounter. We've also been able to expand our care coordination team that's focused on population health, so this team really helps our patients reengage with their primary care team, specialty care, just make sure they're staying on top of their preventative care measures and, you know, any missing care gaps. We've also been able to expand our care, our complex care management team, who are social work nurse care managers, and they work with our patients that are highest risk, that have life-threatening medical behavioral conditions, and might be in and out of the hospital, so our care managers do a lot of transitions of care support, again, with the help of county care, Cook County Health. And I would like to just share a patient story from our care management team that really highlights the work that the team has been doing for our patient population. And we have a fifty-five-year-old patient in care management. She has been a part of the health plan county care for several years, has, has received a lot of support from our care manager. She has a, a condition where she's unable to move, walk much, so she's unable to work. So her primary source of income is SSI benefits. So a couple of months ago, she received a letter from the IRS from the state of California. from the state of California stating that she owed $4,000 in back taxes. And our patient was overwhelmed, shocked, didn't really know what to do. She knew that this was a mistake, but didn't really have the language or the tools to really know how to move forward or how to kind of advocate for herself. So she asked her care manager for support. Our care manager was able to reach out to the IRS, was able to kind of explain the situation, gather all the appropriate documentation, and ultimately fax over it to the office. And a couple of weeks ago, the patient received another letter from the IRS stating that the 4K had been waived or removed, that indeed it was a mistake.[1672.28]